I advocate for mapping, for coming up with a clear definition of what a beach is. What beaches, which beaches would not be suitable for dock construction? And doing inventory of beaches around the island and identifying the two options.
If they did the mapping properly, you wouldn't have to define what a beach is.
No, that's right.
This is what you're love.
Although the group doing the mapping properly would need criteria. Would need criteria to go on with.
Isn't our real objection to A and C is that essentially it's a blanket prohibition?
Yeah, correct.
And if they wanna, but I mean they're the councilman, they're elected, and if they wanna do that.
That's entirely up to them. We're making a recommendation.
This just doesn't make sense.
Well.
Right.
Okay.
So, I mean, C though is, C is in the existing and.
No, no.
He is.
Cause C, I don't really see a problem with it.
Because it says limit or restrict public use of a beach, so if there's not. It's just a definition of access.
Well, there's both access.
Definition of limit again.
So if you're taking a boat access in a beach, in a dock, then that's, then you're restricting public use.
It's really a broad definition, I think.
I see, yeah.
If I can't play football on a beach, you're limiting the use of that beach for me.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
If I can walk, I can walk around it, but if I can't play football there.
Throw my first BM.
So, yeah.
Okay, yeah, go back to the original. And as.
So, the A and C would recommend that the, that the warning stand with the addition of adding beds and benches to ill grass protection.
I've already written one of those.
No, no, you don't, okay, I'm just writing.
The commission recommend that by law number four sixty-six not be amended as proposed, but rather that the existing by law remain with the addition of sections D and E regarding ill grass protection. And the commission recommend the council direct staff to identify beaches that, you know, through bullets.
Um, that are suitable for dock construction, the, that are not suitable for dock construction. And, and C that are, C that are not beaches.
I didn't know we had beaches and not beaches.
Yeah.
I'll just, that's just, yeah, I found it funny.
You identify beaches that are inappropriate for docks, public access and having a dock would be an obvious aesthetic and physical challenge. Do you want to put in those words? That was earlier.
Right, I, I think that becomes a bit of subjective as well.
Okay, well, just that are suitable for dock construction, or, or do we want to just identify ones that aren't suitable?
That's what you said, or.
Are not suitable.
But I think R is, is saying then, that we don't know.
Okay, or not.
I think or not, because we don't know whether you can put a dock in there, or we say, oh, you can put a dock in here and, but it's, it's completely topographic, topographically.
And I.
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of an interesting situation, because if it's a parcel of land, it's quite clear in the land use by law what you can and cannot do on it. And, and, but in a water zone, it's not, it's not clear at all.
Yep.
So, it probably needs to be divided into two or three different water zones. Within this water zone, you can have X, and within this zone, you can have minus X or whatever it is.
Okay, and, and that, that X is, where, where docks are not suitable and beaches where docks may be suitable. Because we don't want to, we, we, we're not going into the detail. I think we're gonna try and pick some out when we know the ill grass stuff and all, but it still needs to go through a permitting procedure.
We found out that I'm in dock building business and I'm trying to promote that.
Yeah.
But that's, I don't think suitable is the word, because that appropriateness is what we're really considering.
Okay, yeah, okay, then.
Cause Bowen Bay would be perfectly suitable for dock.
Okay, but it's the appropriate. Yes, that's a good point, good point.
And we like that or maybe addition?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Well, there you do.
Send it back to maybe.
We're still gonna have to damage those, sorry.
Yeah. Well, it only depends who does this mapping too.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So let's hear it.
I already used the word mapping in here, it's quite specific. They've just said to identify beaches, leave it generally that, and did you want us to look at having two or three different zones?
Well, we just defined what the zones might be.
Yeah, I think, I think there's really just two, there's, there's where, where docks would, would be permitted and where they may not be permitted.
Okay, the commission recommend by law number four sixty-six not be amended as proposed, but rather the existing by law remain with the addition of sections D and E regarding ill grass protection.
Now, just, just for, just for clarification on that, the amended D and E from the original.
I will, I will spell them out.
Well, actually, it's only Ds.
Yeah, G is not about ill grass, and it's not amended, it's, that's already in there.
But E was.
Oh, just D?
Well, no, E was, the other one, E was in it, but it was in this single sentence somehow, I forget how it was.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's not a list like we're, it's not a list right now, it's all just like a sentence.
It was just a sentence, right?
The bylaw maintains it to a.
So we wanna keep the E in there with it.
Yes, and the commission.
Or negatively impact ill grass, meadows, kelp beds, clam beds, or mussel beds.
Right.
Yeah, that's our current rule.
Yeah.
All right, so that's, are we done?
I'm just trying to finish up.
I feel like that's, I can.
I think that's captured.
I can capture, I can just send my desk tomorrow and get the by law prepared and it'll make it very beautiful. That the commission recommend that council direct staff to identify beaches that are not appropriate or may be appropriate for dock construction.
Not, yeah, appropriate, right?
Yeah.
Or reverse the negative and the positive in that?
I don't know.
May or may not be appropriate.
May or may not.
May or may not be appropriate.
Okay, sorry, can you?
Yeah, that's.
So, I remember.
I'm sorry, is it simpler just to say not appropriate, it seems?
Yeah, it probably is.
I think so.
And, and that's really what.
That's what.
That's the essence of what we're trying.
That are not appropriate.
And I, you know, I agree, I agree a hundred percent, I don't think, I don't, I don't wanna see a dock running across Bowen Bay. But, an extension of the Bowen Bay, what we consider the Bowen Bay public, uh, beach, an extension should be allowed. You know, but the actual beach part of it that everybody uses shouldn't be allowed. Shouldn't be a dock over there, there's no question. Anyway, I don't know, it's, it's, it began, it became very subjective.
I take this as.
So we say specific beaches then, that council direct staff to identify specific beaches that are not appropriate for dock.
Yes.
Yes, yes. Nice, nice stuff. Yeah, good way.
I need to use what I use.
Average.
We have some clarity here, clarity, boy, we're sailing.
Someone like to make that a motion? Dennis, second, David, all in favor? It's good, all right.
Two down, one to come.
Now we're gonna rewrite the land use by law.
Oh, yeah.
We have a weekend for this.
So there were four things you wanted to get some clarification about.
Mm-hmm, so just, just some background of this, when in our strategic plan, one of the things was a land use by law update. And so as we're sort of looking at it, we thought, okay, let's bring pieces of it at a time to A and C, so we're not gonna sit down with, with all of it. But what are things that we want to look at, and not to say even that, you know, if we wanna look at and review it, then, okay, we're gonna change it all and rewrite it, but it's more like, two thousand and two, we adopted the by law, most of the definitions, I think, continue from before then, so what are?
Daniel, let's open up your computer.
It is indeed.
You know what, I'm gonna talk.
Yeah, I just closed it.
Okay.
There you go, that's it, right there. Don't leave.
Don't leave.
Hi, well, we've got, yeah, hi, and, and we've got average.
One could be two possibilities there, or three possibilities there.
And same thing.
My ass points.
Thanks for.
How's everything? What, what's the sort of going, I mean, obviously, there's all kinds of different examples, but what's the.
Well, I, I pointed to, it's all over the map, every, every regional district municipality go to has a different, different, a different definition. This one's pretty common.
Yeah.
It's a flat roof, you may have the top. Um, it's probably more common with a gable type roof, or that sort, could be hip roof, to measure to the midpoint.
Correct, otherwise, if you put it to the top, nobody's, everybody's gonna have flat roofs.
It does occasionally apply to, to the outside maximum peak, but it's more, more common to the midpoint between E and the ridge.
It's gonna restrict your floor spaces, so. Well, Gary, what it leads to is more interesting buildings, because then you're not penalized.
If you go to the top. This part is going outside of some kind of invisible.
Yeah, well, that's right, that's what I'm saying, yeah, otherwise, you'd see a lot of flat roof buildings, because they'll maximize their space, this way they can give them lattice space. But it's a new, more interesting building that doesn't look.
So, but this ends up being taller.
Do I see, yeah, yeah.
Um, so, and then, so this is all sort of simplistic, and then the third one, which is a shed roof, which is actually the most difficult one, because if you follow from here, and you go to the midpoint, well, that's fine, you're actually building quite a bit, potentially building quite a bit of space there, which is, is not going up and being truncated, coming back down. It's extending, you know, let's say this actually goes up a little higher. So you're getting to build quite a, you know, piece of space up every time.
But it's not habitable space.
No, should I not?
It, well, it could be some kind of loft or something like that.
Well, what are we trying to prevent, are we trying to prevent view corridors, are we trying to prevent, um, square footage? Cause they're, they're.
Um, probably neither, it's more about view from other properties.
Cause I just was wondering if you put that like.
Overlooking, shadowing, and, yeah, well, that's not.
Cause who cares if they get more floor space on the shed roof thing?
Right.
If, if it meets a height restriction, would be my guess, yeah.
We're looking at some contention of twenty-seven feet, isn't that the normal?
Nine meters?
Nine meters.
Nine meters, yeah, it varies, I've done quite a lot, quite a lot of work in the school, in the school, in the local regional district, and there, it's, uh, it's eleven meters. Uh, things on Shankos Regional District is also higher than that, it's eleven also. So, Bowen is not the most restrictive, but it is somewhat more restrictive, and I think this is the one that's particularly proving challenging for planning. Um, there's a lot of different solutions for this, I mean, this is, this is simple, um, and then you can, you can get into the, the situation where, um, make a simple issue, but, um, uh, let's say the land is doing something like this. And it comes up over here, so, um, that's when things start to begin to get to be a little bit more tricky. Uh, District General say Hoover has provisions where they measure the points around the building, and you take an average of those, and then you establish, um, an imaginary line that runs down somewhere through the middle of that, and then you have, there's two envelopes, I think it's two in no event around the upper volume of the building, you have to stay with him, so, and in this example, you might have one envelope that goes up like this, and you're gonna be within that one, and then there's another one that's smaller, because the property is falling away to the left. Um, so you have this kind of cranked weird geometry, it becomes pretty challenging to work within it and design to it. So there's a point which would be just really overly complicated, and it's not really helpful to anyone, anyone except the planners, who get to get a lot of work, get a lot of work out of it. Um, I don't think Dennis is looking to, for complex solutions here, but rather just to have some consistency.
Yeah, so with the height one, you know, we kind of, we talked about pitched roofs, and we have sort of a definition of how you, you would average it, depends if you have a ceiling or not, and you get to the midpoint. And then I find, over the years, I've gotten into several fights with people as they propose the shed roofs, um, in terms of, because as we interpret it, we, we measure to the top of the shed roof. And people are saying, well, that's not fair, and they're saying your height doesn't say you're measuring to the top of a shed roof.
Many by laws say sloped to the center lines, a midpoint slope roof. And it's a slope roof, and it covers gables, gaps, and sheds.
I think that's a good change.
The, um.
And I don't have, yeah, I don't have like a philosophical, you know, just like it to say, we're gonna measure to the midpoint of a shed, like to be clear, that's what we're doing, and, you know, maybe we have a diagram for that too.
There's a, there's a related question, which I started to get into here, which has to do with where you measure from, but the first thing is about the roof.
First of a roof, yeah, I, I totally support, and I've written a lot of zoning ordinances, to the midpoint of the roofs, because it just gives, it makes a more interesting community. Uh, and, and views, uh, and shed roof, who cares? It's a little, little point up thing, you know, uh, what you don't want is a bunch of flat roofs, so. Yeah. I'd say, I'd say midpoint everything.
Yeah, makes sense.
And then, and then the, the height, building height, I think what you could do is you can take, uh, the average of each side, and, uh, and, uh, and determine your height, maximum height from the middle.
Yeah, it's, it's more, it's pretty complicated, that one, and there's a lot of different solutions to, so, let's just do a roof form first. Um, and then we can go to that, that other question. I, I'm with Dennis on this one, I, I think the measurement to all slope roofs should be to the midpoint. Um, I think, I think it does give some design flexibility. The, you know, further complications arise, this building, uh, if, was the building that I designed recently for clients over in Salt Spring, it has a piece on the back which is flat. So there's a couple of different roof forms within it, so each, each roof form has to comply with the rules for that roof form.
And we do that now, like we say, if you've got both, then we calculate both, right, and sort of measure, you know, what's the midpoint of the shed, and then what's the height if you're flat?
Exactly.
Yeah.
So if this is the point for which we're measuring, then you measure up for this one, and then this one, and they need to be the same. So this needs to be below the midpoint really with that, David, sorry.
Uh, just a matter of question here, I mean, do you really care how high a house is if it doesn't impede somebody else's view? I mean, we've got so many places in Bowen, they're tucked away in the woods, they're on a cliff, and if they built a house a hundred feet high, when there's nobody behind them, wouldn't make any difference anyway.
Kind of goes to the next part of this question, because Bowen has a lot of properties that are like this, and, uh, slow properties, you can take advantage of some of the rules. And where you would normally only get a two-story building, you might get a three or a three-story plus building, because you're averaging as you go around it, which may be fine also, um, but it may not feel fair to everyone. Um, so, I mean, it's, it's an interesting question, but it is, it is a large amount of room max, I think that's the first.
So you can apply for variance, right?
To vary the height?
Yeah.
Yes.
So if, if, um, if it was appropriate to have a three or a four-story bundle of house or whatever, because of the topography and there's someone behind it, would it be very difficult to get a variance, or, like, is it, is that a big and big pattern? I, I just, I don't know.
Yeah, like, we've never had a, a height variance, and in general, I would discourage people, cause I would say essentially that nine meters is nine meters across the island. Like, it's one thing setbacks, cause we've got all of weird shaped lots, and maybe you end up in a little bit of a setback, maybe it doesn't affect the neighbors, but we would say, generally, like, lot coverage and height are sort of uniform, and we would, you know, support that, and we'd say, well, everyone has the same rules for height. Um, but in theory, if you come to council, and people always have the option to go to council in their head.
Right, now is nine meters to the peak, or nine meters to the middle of the roof?
So if you are the middle one, you're going, that would be to your midpoint.
Midpoint here.
Yeah, and it depends, we calculate it differently, do you have a ceiling or have it a vaulted lattice base?
Nine meters is pretty high, that's thirty.
Nine foot floors.
There is three stories in there, three stories.
Three stories already, yeah.
No, I'm making up it. And in our zoning, so I pulled up just on the board here, this is like our most typical zone, the FSR two zone, so essentially, we, we regulate lot coverage and height, and that's how we do it, so we don't, most of our zones don't have any kind of floor area. So we essentially say, this is how big your building can be, this is how tall, and so people can decide in that how.
This, this is different from quite a number of other bylaws where, so the thrust of this, Kirsty, just to answer your question, and then Pedro's your question too, David, is, is about that nasty word density. This is one way of limiting density, without using the concept of floor space ratio. So you want it to height, you want it to footprint, so you've limited the volume of buildings that can be built. The other way to do it is to say, when you do a residential zone, you go in FSR of point six, and that's been, so you get sixty percent of the lot area as built, built in. So that's, so that's, that's going in a different way, it's slightly more complex, um, I don't know whether lots more beneficial than the other. We, do we have FSR, we do some FSR.
We do have FSR in some, basically, mostly in the Cove.
So, so is this just for single-family dwellings, or would it?
This would apply to any of our buildings.
So multifamily apartment building, if somebody gets.
So.
So with something like Volterra?
At the workshop here.
Yeah, they'll, they'll height limit it.
Can that, okay.
In this workshop here, one of the issues that was raised is, would be the junior man's workshop is, okay, how come the, the housing we've been looking for for fifteen, twenty years in the Cove, to provide some more floor, some density in the Cove never gets built, and there was sort of an assumption in the room that our, our rules are restrictive rather than permissible. They're, they're to stop things.
Yep.
Um, and presumably the height, that came up as one of the issues.
Well.
So, so I don't know, I mean, this is different.
That's a perspective.
Well, that is a perspective, but that was a perspective that was in the room.
Right, so it's interesting, because most, you know, all municipalities and, you know, regional districts have some form of regulation.
Sure.
Yeah.
So, I would say, David, in general, probably that's looking at like heights that we allow, in, say, in the Cove, where we allow multi-family.
Yeah.
And is the height appropriate?
Yeah.
And the height's limited by our ability to fight fires.
Um, well, you know, I, I know that's been, like, the, the previous fire chief had brought that up, and I haven't heard that, like, I've asked him several times, and he's not as concerned.
So we could go, and we could go another four, it's supposed to three, we could go four.
The building code does it for us, cause the building code allows a maximum four-story wood, wood frame build.
Yeah. But, but that four, right now, we're limiting to three.
We're not allowing.
Yeah, we're not allowing four.
Are we not allowing, or that's just an anecdotal thing that's been kept?
Yeah, so like, area one got rezoned, and it allows a height of, I would say is it twelve or fourteen meters, is it? The pub, I, I believe, you know, has four distinct levels.
So was that very, people went for a variance or?
They rezone.
It's a rezone, so.
It's a rezoning, yeah.
Because that's certainly something that we, I think we do want to encourage, is the, the four-story lockups, to allow cheap building and density.
Yeah.
So, rooms?
I like it.
So, so what I'm, A and C basically has no, we should count a shed roof as a, as a pitched.
I think, I think that's correct.
I think we definitely recommend that.
Yeah.
And where are we at now with that, David?
This whole process?
No, just.
Right now, I think it's not clear about shed roofs.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's sort of vague, and as I've been told when I started, and we do it, is that we interpret it as saying shed roof, you measure to the peak.
Yeah, okay.
Shed roof what?
You measure to the peak, this is essentially how we interpret it.
So this would change that?
Yeah. Um, so the next one that Drew is, is sketch stuff here, is grade.
Right.
Um, so average, natural, average, finished grade, so essentially, I mean, when we measure height, we essentially go, we figure out where we start counting from, and then the pitcher talks about where we measure up to, and then we just measure that accordingly, we say that, that's nine meters. And it's fine if you're on a flat lot, it's really straightforward, you know, okay, this is obviously grades, when I was in Kidimat, they're all like sites that were leveled in the fifties, and we never even talked about grade, it was just like.
This is the ground, right?
Here, go on, that's, yeah, and then I came to Bowen, learned all of the different ways to measure it, so. So Drew's showing, yeah, a nicely sloping lot, so you can see, this is four corners, what we would do now, if you, if you were trying to build this house on a lot, and you were submitting a site plan, we would say, okay, show us, there's four corners on this house. A, B, C, and D, for each of those, tell us the grade, so tell us both the natural, what it is now, and then finished, where your house is gonna end up.
So if this, if, if you had topography running through here, so you can kind of see, you know, the lots, let's say, falling down this way, let's say it's a hundred feet here, it's a hundred feet here, it's ninety-five feet here, and it's ninety feet here. You know, the four corners, that we divide by four, and that's the number you use to measure up from.
Yeah, and then we ask.
From the middle of the building.
Nope, so that essentially.
To, to the midpoint, point of your roof, right.
So you would.
So you take, you take, you take, so, so there's a neo-imaginary line that you're measuring from through here.
Yeah.
And you're measuring up from there to the midpoint.
Yeah.
Does that work, like, it's not, it seems, I think the simple, more simple it is, the better.
So, it works, what you can do is you can play games with it, so right now, we've, we've got a square, if you put a little crop, you know, up here.
Right.
It's put, it's put to add on, up on the uphill side.
Up on the uphill side.
You now have got covered the orange.
Right.
Those are gonna push their.
See, it's average, right?
Does the games matter?
People play games.
But so what, I, I, I'm really just asking, so.
Why do we care?
Why do we care?
I think we care, cause again, it's sort of like you end up with a much bigger building than almost we intend, and it's like looking at, okay, do other people measure, cause everybody measures it somehow, right? So you're gonna measure it some way that maybe doesn't incentivize games, where you want it to be.
It comes back to density, the whole thing is about density, so.
Well, I could, question about density, does density, do we really care about density? I mean, if we, I, the problem I have is we've got basically hardly any setbacks on properties, really minimal. Uh, and so, if we had decent setbacks, like from streets.
I think setbacks are big.
I don't know, I keep seeing one and a half meters.
Side yards, side yards are three meters and.
Seven point five and three.
So a point five frame back and three on the sides.
Okay, uh, my work, I've been seeing the one and a half, something like that. Good, we had snow cold, snow cold, well. And I think even on our big lots, that was, people were, are building right up next to the street, and mind you, right, that's a whole other issue.
Probably so, forty by hundred.
But, uh.
This, this is a common method for determining the baseline from which height is measured.
Yeah, so now you're talking finished grade here, aren't you?
No, no, it's, it's, well, the terminology is always the lesser of.
Yeah.
Existing or finished grade, so you can't arbitrarily, um, you can't stack that for the end. Up, up, versus say, well, I'm gonna measure from up here, right, it doesn't, yeah, you gotta measure from.
Yeah.
Um, so the only more simplistic version that I've run across, this was a year ago, it's quite recent, um, on Salt Spring, where, um, if this is a property, this is a house, they measure from the midpoint of each wall, about two meters from the buildings, and those are the four points you use to determine.
From every wall segment?
So what if you have a.
They, they do it very simplistically, as if it were just a simple rectangle.
So you can't add a little extension to change, to go around it?
I presume not. Um, I think the points of the building is a more accurate way of doing it.
Yeah, it's more traditional, for sure.
Again, you can go, you can get into this development of envelope instead, um, Richmond uses that concept, I know there, I think they've got, City Vancouver is two envelopes that you have to work with them.
That's very complicated for a little island.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's more complicated, definitely, and particularly if you, if you then add a steep, sloping site, it falls in two directions and rises up behind you.
Yeah.
I know, cause people sometimes give us the calculations too, like West Van calculates line segments as a height, so they would go each line segment, and they would give it as essentially as a proportion of the total perimeter of the building, and they say, this is this high, and it's this proportion of the total, and you end up with.
Oh, to avoid the.
So it's, so essentially to avoid that, avoid that.
Right, and that's not that, that's not as complex as District General think, the West Van.
I didn't just make it as simple as we can.
Yeah, I agree.
And, and then there's a little bit, you know, how, how, what is the maximum game playing that can go on, like, how damaging is that gonna be to? Like, how damaging is that gonna be to us, our island?
I mean, you can game it, you know, depends how steeply sloped you are.
If you have a pretty steeply sloped roof, and it's fairly large, so you're not, so then the setbacks are not really coming into the, into play in the picture. Then, then you can move things around.
But is that a problem, is it?
I, I would say it becomes a problem for the neighbors. That's what it's a problem for, neighbors have certain expectations, suddenly the house is, you know, if they've made it two or three meters higher than, you know, they could have for something. So it just feels bigger. So for example, um, there's a house that went in on Sea View, that for a while was quite visible on Kate's Hill. It was visible when it was being built and stuff, but it was, it's, it's, it's exactly nine meters high, and it's, it's.
It's a new one, yeah.
Yeah, it's got a quite steep roof, and so their average, their midpoint is up quite high, and they sort of carefully designed it to be right at the top of the averages and stuff. So it's like the highest, and I think we heard from, we heard from basically every Kate's Hill resident about that building.
It looks really out of place, I mean, if I remember, whoa, gee.
So, so that's always essentially is that, you know, it's the person who built something, that the neighbor feels out of scale, that just meets the, the letter of the law. And essentially, people felt like, it's bigger than.
Do you have an alternative to the points being the ground averaging method?
I, I.
What would have, what would have changed that in that particular situation?
Yeah.
What you, what?
Yeah.
What technique?
The West Van method?
The West Van method would have, because they, they had more points at the higher point of that one.
Oh, okay.
It wouldn't have made a big difference, they would have dropped it like a point, maybe.
Which, so what?
Yeah, yeah.
Like, I, I just, I, I, I'm a little bit, um, like, let's make it simple and less, um, unless it's gonna be a real negative thing in general for the island, let's, let's, let's as simple as possible. If one houses, uh, the neighbors consider it out of proportion, well, we don't want, want a bunch of Stepford Wives housing trapped anyway. I don't know.
Hell no. Uh, I think the design of that house was always, and another issue, for sure.
I mean, I think it's general, I, I like simple up until the point where it becomes interpretive, and I, I tend to try to leave that out.
Well, these, these are numbers, you, you would do the calculation.
Yeah, so essentially, like, the points, I like, because it's quite straightforward, and if there's some different way to calculate the points, it's nice. Some other people talk about, you know, essentially, you, you pretend like it's a square, and you put four points in, and then it gets quite interpretive to people saying, well, no, this is really a square one.
That's a little bit of the problem with the Salt Spring method. If this land is crowned this way, and is falling away from the house, these points, because they're so far away from the house, it reacts against you.
Yeah.
That's true, maybe, yeah.
Yeah.
And, and I look at that too, and I think somebody's gonna be like, you know, like an L-shaped house or something, and then we're fighting about, well, where are the, where are the middle one?
Does, does it make sense to have a maximum height of the highest point? Because, you know, I, I agree with about game playing, I mean, let, people design the houses they want, but theoretically, someone could design a house that's eighteen meters high, as long as they did it as a total A-frame, right?
Yeah, I mean, you, yeah, if it was open.
Absolutely, yeah.
So we go, like, if it's open, we go up eight feet, I think, and then, yeah, halfway between that, so, yeah, so you could.
But they did, I mean, it would be the ugliest house on the island, but.
But you could, yeah.
When, when you say open, and you're talking about ceiling, so you look inside the house?
Yeah.
Why does that make any difference at all?
So we go, well, because I said, yeah, so essentially, it's where you go, so we don't go from the eaves, we don't say that, but we say we go from either there's a ceiling, you go halfway to the ceiling to the peak, or if it's open, then you go up eight feet, and you go halfway between the peak.
I'm over that, sorry.
And essentially, it's for the houses that, like, if your house, if your floor, and you go up really high, and then you start to, you know, your eaves are higher up, or something like that. We don't just go halfway from the eaves, we go halfway from, until we determine the next floor is.
Oh.
So if this had a shallow pitched roof on it?
Uh-huh, yeah.
And walls came up.
Yeah.
But this has some slope to it, so your midpoint is on here, not down.
Yeah. Yeah, well, uh, and so it, it doesn't matter whether it's opened or closed inside the box.
It, it only matters because it affects the exterior, it's just a way of stopping exterior from getting out of control. It's not, the plan is going to be ever.
Well, but, that goes, that, that goes back to, uh, if we're doing the building height up to the halfway on the slope. Uh, and halfway on the slope, even on a shed roof.
Yeah.
Who, who cares whether they, they just have exposed beams inside or not?
Right, so we do it in part, because if you think about like an A-frame building, somebody says, well, the whole thing is the eaves, even though there's three stories inside it, right? We say, no, we don't, we count, we're gonna go up to the top story, and then we're gonna go up the height of that, and then we're gonna say, that's where your, that's where it starts the pitch that we measure the midpoint to.
Oh, I understand.
So you don't, you don't wish it's high. So you don't get to just say.
Yeah. And you'll have. Okay. Oh, okay.
Okay, so my eighteen meter building's not possible.
Unless you just want four, and then it went up eighteen meters, because that, right? If you really wanted to spike it.
Okay, thanks.
I see, okay, it, it's to avoid that one A-frame issue. Well, yeah, you, you could, yeah.
Or even like, you know, like all the houses just about on Kate's Hill, right, the third floor is within the pitch, right? So even though, but then we say, no, we measure from up here.
It's up in here somewhere.
What do you do with the hosts that, places like you've shown there, that they put windows off the side?
Door doors.
A doormat?
Yeah. Where's the pitch, where's the midpoint then?
So again, we would look at where the, where the floor of the story is.
Same place.
Yeah.
If you put a doormat on both sides?
It, it doesn't matter, because the peak is still at the same point.
Yeah, and that's only.
Some, some bylaws talk about the size of the doormat, the doormat's less than seventy-five.